Let's call the February 1 Finance Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of January 25, 2016, as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda in the minutes. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion will pass. Someone want to take the first three travel requests?
Travel request today for new business. Number one, Jeff Seibel, property safety inspector, 10-day class certified fire marshal exam, Corralville, Iowa, March 17, amount not to exceed $199. Secondly, John Hyman, ICT tech, Kevin Consley, ICT tech, class 2016 annual maintenance conference, destination is the DMAT campus in Ankeny, Iowa, February 3 and 4, amount not to exceed $620. Lastly, Kent Quinn, ICT, John Hyman, ICT, Kevin Consley, ICT, class arc flash at NFPA 70E basic transformers and the DOE 2016 impact Waterloo Center for the Arts, Waterloo, February 10, not to exceed $420.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the first three travel requests. Is there any discussion or questions on them? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Travel requests. Pre-oths.
Pre-oths, we have building maintenance, the amount of $3,786 for purchase of new circulating pump for emergency repair at City Hall, building maintenance, $20,000 for flexible work at Five-Salem Brothers Convention Center, work not to exceed $20,000 extending or ending on December 31, 2016. Police, $4,898 plus $50 shipping for flashback, three mobile vision car, in-car camera system. Sewer department, $20,012 and plus $400 shipping for replacement. Moignot pump, number one, belt press feed pump, sewer department, $5,971 and 25 cents plus $360 shipping to rebuild pump parts and labor for satellite raw wastewater pump. Sewer department, $7,285 plus $300 shipping for replacement for mixer number one, thickener, polymer tank.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the pre-oths. Is there any discussion or questions in regards to those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. I make a motion to approve the budget line amendment, which is on file at the city clerk's office, and also to pay the bills this week, $7,000, $726,712.23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the bills payment. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second adjourned, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Years of hair dryers, I guess.
I like it because it's not.
Can't have too much of that. Hello, hello, can you hear me now?
All right.
All right.
He's a good person, just sounds like a good person.
Take my time until they get the cameras on, okay? There we go, we have it. Welcome everyone to our February 1st city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
All right, you would now all join me in a moment of silence or prayer, whichever you prefer. I was asked to remember two, two people within our community, the son of Ed Addison, and also a long-term member of our community Reverend Ford as well. So if you would join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. We will have the pledge of allegiance this evening, which will be led by our Director of Cultural Arts, Kent Shankel.
Please join me in signing the pledge.
(inaudible) Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of January 25th, 2016, regular session as proposed.
Second. Motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Right now, I have the very distinct honor to call up our, for Catholic Schools Week, Mr. Dale Monroe and the rest of the crew, if you would come on up and join us. You're not Dale, are you? All right, if you want to stand around. And I will read the proclamation if you come this way. All right, City of Waterloo proclamation. Whereas education is critically important to the health and economic vitality of Waterloo and plays a significant role in a family's choice of where to live. And whereas every child in Waterloo has the right to the highest quality schools possible. And whereas citizens across Waterloo agree that improving the quality of education, particularly for the neediest of children, and expanding access to highly effective schools should be an issue of importance to our city leaders. And whereas the citizens of Waterloo recognize the critical role that an effective and accountable system of education plays in preparing all students to be successful adults in a global economy. And whereas Waterloo is the home to a multitude of high-quality public schools, private schools, and Catholic schools, and educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas Waterloo has many high-quality teaching professionals in public, non-public, and Catholic schools who are committed to educating children. And whereas Waterloo, through continued teamwork between parents, teachers, and schools, our community can thrive to provide greater educational diversity and instructional excellence for our children. And whereas this vital cause of education reform is one that transcends ideology and political party affiliation. And whereas Catholic Schools Week is a nationally celebrated event, and during this week, we join with millions of parents, educators, schools, and organizations around the country to raise awareness of the importance of Catholic schools for our city, our state, and country that challenge and motivate all our students to succeed. Now, therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim in Waterloo, Iowa, the week of January 31st through February 6th, 2016, as Waterloo Catholic Schools Week. So, congratulations. I see you have some, some notes here. Would you like to say a few words? All right.
Today, we stand before you representing Blessed Sacrament Elementary, Sacred Heart Elementary School, St. Edward's Elementary School, Blessed Maria Sumter Plata Catholic Middle School, and Columbus High School. As members of our light, leader and me Blessed Maria Student Lighthouse Team, we would like to thank you for asking us to join this evening. The Catholic Schools Proclamation is a great honor for us. This week, we have started Catholic Schools Week by celebrating Catholic Schools education and incorporating some fun doing it. Our theme for this year is Catholic Schools: Communities of Faith, Knowledge, and Service. Having you present this proclamation to us is a great way to start off the week. As city council members, we thank you for your service to our community. You have given our city the best of you, your time and your talent. Thank you for sharing with our residents. Please know that you are all welcome to visit our schools at any time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can we give them another round of applause? Mentors and teachers in the audience, could we give them a round of applause as well? We need to take a quick picture? Yes, ma'am. All right. Say no snow day tomorrow. All right, thank you.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you. Hi, Maria. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, I'm Maria. Thank you. Hi, I'm Maria. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, I'm Maria. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, I'm Maria. Thank you. Hi. Thank you.
All right, I hope there's this much excitement on every I am on the council agenda this evening. Also, I have the distinct honor of recognizing our team member of the month, who is in the audience today. Brian, Brian Rath, could you please stand? It's been a great opportunity to get out and meet all the people that are working hard to make this city a great place, and it is always great when our peers and our coworkers recognize us as stepping up to the challenge to being an exceptional leader within our, within our city. So Brian, we thank you and we just say keep up the good work and thank you for being a great example. And as many other mayors have said before, our Catholic students, please, you don't necessarily have to stay for the rest of this, nor do you get lied.
But they got the message.
Really well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's 1A through B3, and within that is the bill's payment this week at $726,712.23. That's 726,712.23.
Second. All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions, council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
All right, that motion's been, motion carries. Is it on? Yeah, there we go. Sorry about that. All right, public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's a request by Tom Taylor for a site plan amendment to the R4RP Plan Residence District to allow for the construction of a 7,600 square foot veterinary clinic with an outdoor dog exercise area located to the south of 4015 Hurst Drive.
Second. All right, motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of this for or against this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion and to close the hearing and also file the recommendation of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second. Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, were there any objections on file?
There were none.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, that hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance, amendment ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property.
Second. Yep, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is there a development agreement that is going to be with this rezone?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Yes, we are working on a development agreement right now. It was not yet finalized. This is a zoning action, of course, but you're correct that there'll be a development agreement to follow as well.
And, and therefore, is this, should we suspend the rules? Is this, are we in a hurry with the development agreement or any obligations we have?
I don't think there's a need to suspend the rules for all three actions tonight since the development agreement is to follow, and obviously they'll be building in the spring after that.
All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion and to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
No.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
All right, motion fails. We'll pick this up next week. Number three.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of a public hearing, which is the development agreement with Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity to authorize the sale and conveyance of a portion of city-owned property for $1, commonly known as 330 Irving Street for the construction of one single-family home.
Second. All right, motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any objections on file?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this particular item? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second. Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I need to, I move to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with the Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity to authorize the sale and conveyance of a portion of city-owned property for $1, commonly known as 330 Irving Street for the construction of one single-family home.
Second. All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Welper.[1212.22]